Five oh three, meeting of the city council. If I could go ahead and get a roll call, that would be great.
Mayor Begnacourt.
Here.
Mayor Potem Malakon.
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop. Loa.
Here.
And Olson.
Here.
We have a quorum. Great.
Do we have an audience member that would like to do the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence for us? Any takers? Okay, Austin? How about you? Oh, how about you? Are you in? There we go. Thank you, sir.
And a moment of silence for, uh, uh, community member Mr. Pimple Booth who passed away. Ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So it's good to be back. I was on vacation for about ten days, just got back in. I was up in the hills of North Carolina on the Blue Ridge Parkway. Beautiful, beautiful place. If you've never been there, I urge all of you to go. So, right now, they're, they're having the fall change of, of the colors up there and it's an absolutely beautiful place. So if you were trying to get ahold of me and you couldn't, that's because I was at the top of the mountain with no cell service and no wifi. So, so now you guys can all text me and blow up my phone and I'll finally get them, so. All right, so, right now, uh, we're on item number four and we have a presentation and it's four point one. It's the update on Public Works.
Psycho Coach app today. For more information, contact our Innovation and Environmental Division at six six one two six seven fifty three hundred.
That's not my presentation. That was like the last slide. Saw your name flash by for a second there. All right, we're ready? Okay, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and councilmembers. My name is Lynn Glidden. I am the Director of Public Works. And tonight, I will be presenting the Public Works Department, kind of, uh, an overview of what our Public Works Department does and a little bit of, um, statistics to go along with this. I'm going to preface this that we can, I could talk for two and a half hours about Public Works. I did that for Partners Academy, along with our Maintenance Department and every division. And, um, that last academy that we had was a great success. They, I actually got a couple of young engineer girls that are interested in, in talking with me, so I'm very excited about that. But I love our public work, so I get very animated and excited. You're going to get a lot of information fairly quickly. I have forty slides. Um, and so if there's other questions that you may have, please feel free to give me a call. All right, Public Works. So, I'm the Director. Um, so Public Works develop and implements our CIP projects. We do a lot of transportation and special projects. One is the high-speed rail that we're working on. Uh, water resources management. We oversee utilities, which are our city sewers, storm drains and streetlights. We maintain their, our city assets, which are our facilities, streets, landscaping, fleets and sewers. We coordinate transit projects with our AVTA bus, uh, division. And we also manage, a big one is we manage the city's solid waste program. Uh, our engineering department goes in and does, um, construction inspection on new land development plus, uh, engineering review. And we also are developing, well, actually, we've developed a comprehensive asset management tool, which is working tremendously on doing work orders, plus also gathering all the data that we have for our assets. This is kind of our layout of it. We have probably a hundred and thirty-seven employees that I oversee, along with our divisions. Uh, we have a capital improvement division, environmental division, maintenance, engineering and traffic engineering. Uh, part of that, we also have a safety officer that has, uh, created a whole safety program for our maintenance department to be OSHA, uh, certified. Plus, we do a lot of training with our city employees, with our vector training. All right, so we will start first off with our capital improvement program. What do we do when the capital improvement program develops, implements and manages our projects? So currently, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, our capital improvement budget is two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. We have ninety-seven CIP projects. And right now, majority of the projects are falling in the street projects. That's about a hundred and fifty-five million dollars. This includes current projects under construction, Avenue R, Civic Center Streets. We have a couple of projects along State Route fourteen, not currently going, but they will be going shortly. Um, our second in, in line is Yellin', is our Parks Project, Parks Division. So that's about thirty-eight million. Yelling Park, Corson Park, Master Park Plan that we're working on. And another, the third, is about twelve projects, uh, that range eighteen million. And these are our energy efficiency projects that we have going on, broadband, any other studies that we have going on with the, um, high-speed rail or local, um, street projects. So our capital improvement projects, um, like I said, we have ninety-seven projects that are budgeted. Uh, currently, myself and our Deputy Director are managing eleven projects between us. Our CIP manager, which we will get in, uh, November, she's going to be getting some projects to manage also. And then with the five project managers, they are managing a total of about forty-eight projects. Um, very high demand, very, uh, a lot in different ver- uh, various realms of the project, meaning in development, in procurement, in construction. Currently, we have twenty projects that are in construction. That would mean that they are actually in construction that you're seeing on the Avenue R or Civic Center or Oasis Park, those kind of things. But also in construction that there just has been awarded and they haven't quite made it out to, to full implement. Just a couple pictures of what's proj- projects in progress. Yellin' Park is on the bottom, they're doing their mass grading and starting, um, the building portion of the project. There's footings and foundations out there. Uh, the top left is a Civic Center Complete Streets, which is Tenth Street East. And then the next one over is a storm drain project along Avenue R. Capital improvement projects that were recently completed were Courtney's Playground, Rancho Vista Park, uh, Avenue R and Forty-Fifth Street East Signal and a, a large sewer manhole replacement project. So that's capital. Now, we're going to go into engineering and traffic signals. So engineering traffic signals review all the projects, both private and, um, CIP for entitlements. They also are the creator of the assessment districts that we have. Uh, they are issuance of construction permits and they also provide construction inspection. So you can see, because we're only like four months in to this fiscal year, I, a lot of my data on this end of it is back to twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we had four hundred and seven civil plan submittals that were, um, submitted. And then, um, last year, we had eighty-two cases that were submitted for review for DAB. And ultimately, we had six projects that were notice of completion that we accepted this last fiscal year. Those are probably a lot of the ones that you see coming through the, the council where it's a, a track that is a final development. This next slide just pretty much shows where construction permits were issued. Uh, four hundred and forty-seven issued, uh, last fiscal year. You can see it, it's trending pretty much the same every year. Um, around June, we kind of took a dip. December, we take a dip. Um, but, that's what we're going on. Engineering fees, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we brought in two point six million. Uh, number one improvement was the improvement plan reviews and also the public works inspection. And then just some pictures of what our engineering aspects look at. Again, and, you know, storm drain work, they look at our sewers, or we look at our right-of-way and then paving. Um, part of the engineering department is our traffic signal and streetlight maintenance division. Uh, so these guys design, operate and maintain all the streetlights and the traffic signals within the city. Currently, this department has a hundred and ten city-owned traffic signals. We maintain eighteen LA County-owned traffic signals. And we also have seventy-three non-signal maintenances, which are flashers or speed signs. Um, yes, yes.
Word, Highway one thirty-eight.
This does not include Palmdale Boulevard, that is Caltrans.
Okay, so we don't have any information about, about that at all?
No. We, I mean, they are in, th- they're in contact with them, so if a light does go out, we can contact them. But they do not go in and, and maintain them.
Any word on one twenty-fifth east is going to be operational?
Fifteenth East?
Fifteenth East.
Fifteenth East in Palmdale Boulevard? Yes, um, we got the final rider permit from Caltrans. So it's basically everything that has been installed is good to go. We need a final inspection from Caltrans Inspector and then we need to schedule the final turn-on with Caltrans. I'm not going to give a date on that because there's two different sets of group of people that need to do that. But, the four-year end?
Yay!
I'm hoping, so.
It's been put in, but it's been covered.
It's been very long and, and, um, I always say to my staff, I don't want another Caltrans signal, um, because it's...
That's why it's important to take over the Boulevard.
Yeah.
Which our assemblyman is helping us with.
And, and Lynn, I think Andrea had a question too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, but we can, we can, I can do them at the end.
I, I have a quick question. What's a soffit?
Um, soffit is probably like underneath, um, oh, that's a good one. Um, well, this, this would be considered a soffit in a building.
Okay.
But, in a traffic signal arena, I'm not quite sure, so.
I always ask if I don't know something, so I didn't know what that was, but.
So I guess my, my question is only back one slide. So, um, it's with regard to the engineering fees?
Uh-huh.
So that we, we recovered in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, two point six million in, uh, engineering fees? Is that a hundred percent cost recovery? Or have costs escalated in terms of personnel costs, so then we, we might have to look at moving forward, increasing fees?
You know what? That's a very good question that I don't know the answer of right now. I would, that's a bit, I will definitely look into that to see, to see what is, if it was cost recovery or not.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Um, along with our streetlights, we have about eighteen thousand streetlight poles that when we took over all the streetlights, we did that about a couple, I want to say, five-plus years ago. Um, just on an average, five streetlights per month get knocked down. It, that is a lot. I think when we originally were looking at, we maybe had estimated, once a month, five. So it's a, it's a lot that we're having to maintain and keep inventory in our yard for those streetlight poles because now we're maintaining them as Edison is no longer maintaining them.
During, during COVID, Mayor, uh, during COVID and after COVID, there's been a complete increase in traffic accidents, speeding, running red lights and all of that. Does this, uh, show?
An increase from pre-COVID era in terms of the number of incidents that are knocking down poles?
Um, I would, no, because I actually think they knock, when we, when we first took them over, they, it was probably higher than this, so I think it's probably dropped a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Bottom line, we want people to slow down.
Yeah, slow down.
There's nowhere that you need to be and in such a rush, just enjoy life a little and slow it down.
Right, and, and then I guess along the same lines in terms of cost recovery with regard to poles that are knocked out by vehicular, you know, whatever accidents, how long does it typically take to recover the costs, you know, through litigation? Because I know we have to front fund to make it.
Yeah, we have to front fund these poles and then it goes through the claims process through our city attorneys.
And do you?
And I don't, I don't know that answer.
Okay, well, if you could maybe just give back to me so that we could sort of think through, maybe if we need to sort of strengthen our,
Our.
our litigation sort of arm in recovering that money? Are we recovering a hundred percent of it typically?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming we may not be recovering a hundred percent of it.
Right.
Because it's going through the insurance claim of whomever and then if there is no insurance claim and, yeah.
Right, so it'd be just helpful to, to sort of get a, a, a larger look at what we're recovering, what we're spending.
Thanks. All right. The next division is our Innovation and Environmental Division. So this division has five employees. Uh, they monitor the city's environmental compliance efforts. That includes the solid waste recycling programs, a lot of community outreach and outside agency coordination, uh, programs with ABA, QMD, and also our energy conservation and efficiency programs, which include EV charging stations, wireless communications, illegal dumping, the Epic Energy Program and our City Fiber. And I'm, I'll go through each of those last, uh, programs a bit. So solid waste and recycling, this is along with waste management. Uh, basically, what, this is meaning that we have to keep up with all the state requirement mandates for dumping or for trash. Uh, what this means for, for us is that as a resident, you're required to, uh, separate your food and waste and then you're also putting into a, a, uh, organics container. So there's a lot of outreach that our team does with, uh, the public, with schools. Um, we go to different events and, and let everybody know, especially with this new organic can that, that is coming out. Uh, the community outreach and outside agency, again, SB thirteen eighty-three is, is our organics. Uh, we also have, um, oil filter, uh, change-out, tire collection events, uh, paint care, which basically is you can donate your paint at a certain event. Uh, you can pick up paint at that certain event and then we als- also threw in like a labor, uh, not a labor, but an art themed, where we actually had an artist came in and actually used the paint that was donated that day and created a mural on one of our city walls. EV charging stations, so a little note that all new vehicles sold in California by twenty-thirty-five are to be either electric or a plug-in hybrid. So that means we need a lot of chargers around the city. So currently, what we have is, we have twenty-four and they're at various lo- areas, Oasis Park, Civic Center, Avenue S Park and Ride, the PTC Rancho Vista Park. McAdam Park is, will be soon getting twelve, I believe that's a, a line, uh, staff report this evening. And then also Marie Kerr Park will be getting eighty when we put in that, uh, park and ride.
I was about to ask you about that.
Yes.
Marie Kerr is not included in the list.
Yeah, no, they, they will be taken care of heavily. It is a very big site, so that's where it warrants the number of, of stalls. Wireless communication facilities, uh, our, our team manages thirteen active sites and two inactive sites for any wireless communication throughout the city. Drytown is the first one, that was, uh, one that it kind of is a cell tower that mimics our Drytown Water Park, uh, theme. And we also have one out at our square, Poncelon, the flagpole, is actually a wireless capabilities. Illegal dumping, uh, we manage the active action plan and the cleanup events. So we, we coordinate with a lot of agencies, Caltrans, LA County for our community days, those type of things. We work very well with our maintenance department on those type of programs. We try to come up with new programs. Our action plan is kind of a living, breathing document. So we try new things, whether we're going to be putting out, uh, cameras at certain locations to see if we can see any illegal dumpers and things like that. Um, so it's, it's always a living and breathing and changing. Uh, the next program that our, our team follows is the Epic, which is energy for Palmdale's in- independent choice. Um, just a note over, there, there's ninety percent participation from the city of Palmdale on, um, from city of Palmdale residents into this program. And currently, we have, uh, five programs that are in place. A couple of them is that residents can go in and, uh, request to change out their ther- their thermostat for a smart thermostat. And basically, it's for free and once you do rebates and things like that, so it's, it's a very easy program. Uh, we're also looking at some EV chargers for residences, uh, for the plug-in at their homes. Um, we're working, uh, looking into work with, with Tesla kind of thing. So there, there's all these programs that are going to be available for the people that are in the CCA and actually, a couple of them are for, for non-re- for non-participants too. And the last program that are e- environmental is our City Fiber. So we are actually working with two groups right now. Sci-Fi is actually under construction. They have, uh, installed about twenty-three thousand lineal feet of micro trenching. This is about four percent of their goal. Um, and then they have stated that they are going to, uh, start a service event. They're going to launch their service event in the second quarter of next year. Uh, that means that their plan is they're going to bring, um, their team out, they're going to go to neighborhoods. They're going to have taco trucks and events and, and letting the, letting the residents know what has to happen in order to get service. Uh, Race Communication is actually also working with the city. They have not done any actual physical construction, they're getting their plans ready, submitting it to the city. Um, and we're going to be going through there. Race Communication is actually a, uh, uh, utility company, so they need to follow the kind of the CPUC guidelines. But they have been really, uh, great to, to work in with right now. Um, and I think they'll probably get a little faster because they can actually do a lot of overhead in lieu of micro trenching. They could, they can go on the poles. So we'll see, we'll see who gets to the finish line first, I guess.
So I've been advised that Race Communications is beneficial over Sci-Fi for two reasons. One, it's faster, as you noted. One, it's faster, as you noted, but two, it will be less expensive for the end user. Is that accurate?
I I don't, I don't know. I would probably ask Ben, but I don't know if we've gotten their full breakdown of everything on that, so. But I know Mr. Olson probably has the answer to that.
Sci-Fi doesn't have any affordability standards that they have to comply with. And Race is a telecommunications company, so they they have access to the the conduit rightaways anyway, so um they're going to be much faster and based on their proposals that they submitted, they are meeting those affordability standards.
All right. So now we get to our maintenance division. And I wanna just say, um our maintenance division is is top-notch. They they do so much work that I think it's it's amazing how much, you know, if you ever have a chance to to ride with one of these guys for like an hour, hour and a half, is really very eye-opening. I've been with the city for a long time until I kinda got way high up. I never rode with them. I rode with each one of them and it's like, my god, you go from here all the way over to there every day, you have to do this and you only have so many people. So it's amazing what they can get done and um yeah, I'm very proud of them. Um so a little bit, administration is basically six staff. They go in and do all the processing of the work orders, the service requests, the contracting and budgeting. Uh they do the the dumping, illegal dumping and graffiti tracking. Uh they also maintain the asset management program, which is Lucidity, which is our work order program that we're using. Also along with creating our assets and uh, you know, letting us know when we have to go in and repair things or do preventative maintenance items. I wanted to mention too, because of Lucidity, with our last storm that we had for Hillary, uh we had asked, um I had asked our staff to create a map. Unfortunately, I didn't get the map up here at the time. Create a map that shows the locations of all the issues that we had for Hillary. Um it showed all the work order items that came in from the public, from staff going out there and driving around, um from call-ins, from where we knew there was gonna be issues. Um so it's gonna be very valuable information for our state FEMA EOS or OES uh submittal for reimbursement. Uh and ultimately, we will show you, showcase where issues are. I also found that it's gonna be helpful for the CIP team to be able to determine the problem areas and what we can possibly do, you know, budget-wise, budget some funding to either help that intersection with drainage, things like that. So it's, it's a very good tool.
What is the um time limit that we have to get that submitted to FEMA for reimbursement?
Um I've been out of the loop on that one. I know that, well, tonight we're extending it one more time.
Okay.
We are still in the process of doing cleanup and shoulder repair. A lot of shoulder erosion.
I didn't know if they had like a hard cutoff.
Oh, no, they, I think you have like a six-month time period to be able to get stuff.
Okay.
Um just from that side, the O E, the Hillary storm, majority of it was shoulder repair erosion. Um we had no basins that failed. We did, there was a a wall that did go down that we're looking at. It is not a city wall, but it's, you know, there was a lot of rain that came down. So we're, we're working with the property owner on that. Um but yeah, we're, our maintenance guys are still cleaning up and it's, what, it was August? So. Facility maintenance, uh we have a staff of twelve employees and these guys basically run, they they maintain all of city, city buildings. Uh heating and air conditioning, electrical, carpentry, you name it, they probably do it. Uh they maintain all the swimming pools. Um they provide custodial services for the city facilities through a contract. Uh they spec, they help with on all the special projects. And um the next slide was big, kinda statistical stuff. There's sixty-eight buildings. Five hundred and twenty thousand square feet is what it kinda calcs out. Uh we have forty-eight buildings that have custodial services. We have four pools that are maintained and we have one water park.
Mayor, yeah. Then um in terms of the graffiti uh responsibilities, the tracking.
Mm-hmm.
Um is this information you receive after uh the graffiti has been reported and and then sent out for repairing? Where, how does that process work and what's the tie between um the, your department and code enforcement? And how's the, how does the follow-up work?
Okay, so I can answer the first part of it. It, when, when somebody calls in and puts in a request through our our uh our app or Call the City, it's, it's pinpointed, a request will go out. Where it, it kind of depends. We have a certain period of time, whether I think it's five to seven days of trying to get it done. If it's very bad, if it's bad graffiti, it's, it's pretty much taken care of as fast as we can. The the information that are on the maps, that's kind of instantaneous. They can graph anything right, right to that time. It's on the fly.
It's on the fly.
And then code enforcement, if it's on private, code enforcement deals with all the private. Public Works will deal with everything in the public right away.
It it seems to be uh increasing, the graffiti problem, so.
Um I think there's a couple of slides. It's actually kinda decreasing right now. It did increase during um during the summertime. It's kind of expected. Kids are not in school. Once kids went back to school, it quite, it's it's kind of gone down. Uh I think this slide has a certain amount of square footage on it. Um it's the same with the dumping. It it kinda, it has these, these uh, these traits that we, and we're following pretty much the same trait. December, I expect to see another increase because kids will be out of school. And that's what happened last December. We had, we had a big rash of.
The public, at least the ones I hear from, uh seem to think that it's a problem, it's systematic. And uh sometimes there's complaints that the city doesn't do enough to curtail this problem. Um but it's good to see that we have that as one of the issues that your department deals with, but we should be aware. And sometimes uh especially like along Palmdale Boulevard, some of these buildings get hit repeatedly. Um and with substantial amount of graffiti on some of those walls. And 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 sometimes it's up there for a period of time.
Yeah, and then see, the public works, we can't, we can't take care of those, yeah, yeah.
And I know the code enforcement is is dealing with it, but uh it's a substantial issue. And if we don't address it rapidly in terms of uh repairing the damage, um it begins to deteriorate the sense in the community that that we're safe here.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor, may I make a comment to that?
Yes, absolutely.
So uh it does appear that it did go down a little bit, but it's starting to pick up some. And I'm noticing a lot of it on the east side. I'm getting a lot of phone calls. This morning, I went to the Coffee with a Cop event and I asked detectives there about it. They said that they made three key arrests in the last two days uh on the east side. So hopefully that that helps. And for everybody on the east side that's been messaging me, Maintenance knows, the Sheriff's Station knows, they're on it.
So, yeah, so just following up on the same uh discussion, on the previous page, there is a chart that says graffiti incidents fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Is that an accurate chart or is that just sort of a demonstrative figure? Because if you look super close at it, it shows that from January to December.
This one?
Oh, yes.
Are you looking on that one?
The one in the court, this one underneath where it says administration. If you look at the numbers underneath the 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 chart, from July to December, the average of incidents um was in the range of two hundred, no more than, no more than three hundred. But then this January to June, I mean, there's, in March, there was over seven hundred. Um and then there was, you know, immediately following that, in April, there was six hundred, May, almost six hundred again. Is there something that you would attribute the increase this year, this past six months as opposed to last year's six months? Cause the kids have been in school, I mean, those last six months of of twenty-twenty-two as well.
You know what? I would, I I don't know.
Cause that's a significant jump from two hundred to seven hundred.
We, we've gotten that. I don't, I don't know. I would probably have to have statistical person here analyze it for me and help me out on that one, so.
It's also probably in our best interest to maybe call uh our graffiti detective up and do a small presentation in the future if we can arrange that.
Yeah.
Good idea.
But I, I think too that we also have been putting together educational campaigns on how to report graffiti.
Mm-hmm. Say it, don't spray it, those kind of things.
Make it easier for people to know what to do when they see it, so that might account for a little bit of that.
All right. Landscape maintenance. So we have two landscape maintenance divisions. One is landscape assessment districts and general benefits. So these are all the LMDs. And then if you're talking the medians and and those areas. We have about seventeen and a half employees. They do a lot of um the, you know, managing the major service contracts where we have uh Parkwood and Rich Myers. I I believe Rich Myers may be more park-related, but Parkwood does a lot of the, our maintenance contracts on that. Cleanup uh homeless encamps, repair multi-use trails, any landscape renovations, you know, all our LA, our our landscape maintenance districts, which the next table, I think we have two hundred and forty-five landscape maintenance districts. Um illegal dumping removal, they, these, these, this team is very big on the illegal dumping removal, graffiti abatement. They trim all the city trees in the medians parks and right away. And just they are everywhere you can see, find them. So here's a little bit of statistics. Again, two hundred and forty-five landscape districts, fifty-seven general benefit. These are the medians. Um or along, say, uh Rancho Vista Boulevard in front of the Country Club area. Uh trees maintain, almost sixteen thousand trees that are maintained, uh six miles of trails. A whole lot of other numbers that that this team keeps, keeps going. And a couple pictures, uh the Ran- Rancho Vista is the one with the big Palmdale sign in there. Uh going in and doing uh tree trimming. And they, you know, when I say managing projects, that's, or managing contracts, these are some of the i- items that come forward to you from this department where it's the the tree trimming contract or it's the Parkwood or the um Rich Myers. Next division is our park maintenance division. So these guys are a team of eight. Um they do have a support staff with Rich Myers that helps with all the parks. Uh but they maintain five hundred and twenty-two developed acres. Uh they are very big on water conservation along with with our general benefit. But but this team, Steve Montenegro, is very, very uh dives deep into water conservation. Again, they manage multiple-year service contracts. Um again, some statistics, we have nineteen parks. Uh total area maintained five hundred and seventy acres, developed and non-developed. Ball fields, twenty-four, pickleball courts, they do all that kind of thing, twenty-seven. Uh skate parks, two. Trees maintain about sixty-seven hundred. Uh they also help with all our CIP work, uh any concrete fencing and gates, painting. Again, the, again, every single one of these divisions help with the graffiti, they help with the illegal dumping. So um you have kind of a all hands on. Park maintenance, again, you have one maintenance specialist that goes in and um monitors all the water retention and and use on that energy conservation. So in twenty-twenty-one, we um, we have a number that we use about six hundred and fifty-two acre feet of water for, for water in our parks. In twenty-twenty-two, that dropped to four hundred and eighty-one because that was a requirement of both PWD and LA County for uh water restrictions. And with PWD, that means we dropped twenty percent of our water usage for that. And we still had pretty good green parks. Um and then thirty percent for LA County as as a result of the water, water decrease usage. So we are constantly always looking at different ways of fertilizing and de-thatching and other equipments and needs.
Uh addressing the trees, I see six thousand seven hundred and eighty-one. Um that's a lot of trees and I I imagine that that's all in the uh public areas, the city, city control.
Yeah, these are probably more in the park, the park areas. Our landscape maintenance man-managed pretty much everything else, which is fifteen thousand trees.
Okay.
So it's the street trees, the street trees, those are, yeah.
So that's about fifteen thousand, okay, on top of the sixty-seven hundred.
So twenty.
That's still about a hundred and twenty per acre, something like that. I mean, uh a hundred and twenty per square mile.
I don't know on that one. I'm not gonna get.
Well, it's, it's, it's fifteen.
So a lot of trees.
It's fifteen, all right. It's fifteen thousand.
Do it by population.
So it's about a hu, it's about a hundred and forty-two trees per square mile. Which really, when you start looking at it that way, it's not really a whole lot.
Yeah.
But uh so what's being done to increase the number of trees that we have? I mean, I think it really adds to the aesthetics of the city. Um the sense of well-being, that it's a good place to live and do work and educate.
You know what? I would, I would be unjust to answer a question like that because I'm not a tree. Obvious auto or, I would, I would actually have Steve Montenegro probably provide you with additional information.
There you go. Look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would probably a- ask Steve Montenegro to probably um help you with that on what we're actually doing. I can provide that information for you.
Could we do that? Um, I mean, and then in terms of what we're doing to enhance the number of trees that are on the streets and uh in the parks and so on.
Okay, that's a great Arbor Day participation with all the scouts. Let's get them all out helping us with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a thought.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to follow up on the park maintenance, yeah, there's like a litany of of things that they're responsible for. One is homeless encampment cleanup in parks. Um then my question is, do we have a policy in place that, you know, when, do we just simply clean them up and ask them to leave? Do we offer them s- supportive services?
So there is, so.
Do they relocate?
Yeah, they're, they're, from what I understand, and they, there is a definitely a policy that has to be followed. Um I remember one where they were cleaning up, probably on the freeway, they actually had to go, you know, you had service workers or social workers that came in first, that would go in and ask them to to move. Um once they did that, then you actually probably had um the police department come in and make sure that everything, the camps were safe. Then you had the health inspector come in and make, so there's a lot of protocol before our team actually goes in and cleans it up.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Street maintenance, the, the street maintenance is the largest um division, but there's a lot of streets to maintain. Um we actually have uh five hundred and eighty-five street centerline miles. Uh twenty-four hundred acres of, if you consider pavement area, uh six hundred and six curbs in miles. So there's nine bridges, five hundred and forty dry wells that they maintain. They maintain our drainage basins. Uh they maintain traffic safety signs, eighty-six hundred of those. Uh so these guys go in and they, they are very big on the illegal dumping aspect of it. They will go and help with all the removals. They have the cool lightning loader that picks up the, the, the yucky stuff and um not having to do it by hand. So these guys are very busy. Um here is a um another graph for illegal dumping. Um you can see it's, it's, pardon, May, it was, it's increasing now. Um you have requests, incidents, locations, and then tonnage. The last, the last item in there are the tons. So from May to June, it increased from a hundred and sixty-eight tons to two hundred tons.
Lynn?
Yes.
Are we ever gonna put something on our website regarding the road maintenance? So a person calls and says, when are you guys gonna fix my street? I know that we have things in order, like they're prioritized based on what needs to be done. Are we ever gonna make that list public?
Yes, yeah. Well, we are working on what we call a pavement resurfacing program. So we're looking at uh maintenance zones. Um our deputy director, Hamed, is working on that with along our our PM. So that will definitely determine in the area of the zones, what streets are there, what our PCIs are there within those zones, and then how we can then determine what roads will be resurfaced.
Okay, cause I think that's one of the most frequent calls I get is.
Yes, it is forthcoming. We're working very tight with our Lucidity guys to create those maps.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes. Fleet maintenance, I have one more department after Fleet. Um staff of four people, these guys maintain all our equipment. Um you, you got your big trucks, your small cars, your vans. You actually have all your large construction equipment. Uh you have all the trailers that we needed. And then you also have all the small maintenance equipment, your chainsaws, your blowers, your pumps. Um I'd like to make note on this one too, um that we're working very tight with with Fleet. So January twenty-twenty-four, um the state has required that one-half of all newly purchased vehicles are to be electric. I don't think we're buying any vehicles in the next couple of years because we tried to like get them earlier, so we wouldn't be in this situation. But but we're having to 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 meet that goal ahead of when the whole public. But but we're having to 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 meet that goal ahead of when the whole public meets it in twenty thirty-five. Uh by twenty twenty-seven, all of our vehicles, city city vehicles that we purchase, any new vehicles, will have to be electric. So what does that mean for us? We have no electric charging stations at this site. We are looking at microgrid, which ties back to our environmental division. We're looking at charging stations, we're looking to determine, do we even have, does Edison even have the ability to be able to charge just vehicles, but you're also talking about charging every single thing that our maintenance guys are gonna be using. And not just small, this is basically anything over seventy-four hundred pounds on a vehicle. So I don't know what we're gonna do when you're talking these big construction equipment that where batteries are gonna go, that we talked about today, where are batteries gonna go, how are we gonna store them, how do we recycle them? So it's, this is, this is coming and we're we're looking into it. Where these guys are very uh detailed with carb, so they know what is going on. Um we're looking to build a new fleet maintenance that is budgeted. So we sat down today and talked about what they are looking at, what they need, their needs. Um so yeah, it's these guys with four people, I don't know how they do it, but.
Food food for thought, um starting next year in April, Assembly Bill thirteen forty-six bans the sale of gas power, lawn mowers, blowers, weed weed whackers, so that's 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 our first.
Well, and and one thing I wanna mention is this this rule that's the twenty twenty-four, this applies to our contracts. So it applies to our Rich Meyers. It applies to our Parkwood people. It applies to probably an engineering company that I use. If they're gonna buy a new vehicle, it has to be half, you know, half electric kind of thing. So it's it's a big undertaking and it's a big uh thing to follow, and don't get me started on that one, so. I'll end it right there. Alright, our last division is our sewer maintenance division. This is a staff of eleven people. These guys go in and maintain our three hundred and ninety-five miles of sewer. Um I think we, I I can't remember the quite the year that we took over the sewer department from L A County. Uh but we had a lot, a lot of um overages and blowups and whatever you wanna call them. Um from the sewer when L A County was here, when we took it over, we we cleaned them all out, we've we we repaired a lot of our sewers. Um we've had not many overflows. I can't say I, we we just had recently one small little overflow. Um but yeah, these guys go in and and do a lot of the the lift stations. We have two that we're ultimately gonna try to get rid of. One on, that's on Avenue S at Casa Verde, uh eighty-four hundred manholes. Um they've, they run the fog oils and grease program. Um and they, they're good. And there there, there's my crew with their with their jet truck. They go in and videotape it, they go in and clean it, they go in and root barrier, so um that's it. Yes, and a puppy, yeah, there's been puppies caught in there, too, so. Um with that, I am done for Public Works. I talked a lot.
Eric has some questions?
Uh no, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, if you don't mind, make a couple statements for the public benefit. One, based on uh Councilmember Lowe's comment about the trees. I believe the city has applied for an urban urban forest grant, so I think that that will help with that. I think we all understand the benefit to it. Um alright, sorry, I wrote these down, so I didn't have to interrupt along the way. Um to the mayor pro tems, comments and points about the encampments in tents. I think um the city works with the Sheriff's Department and our partners with L A S A. I think the priority is to make sure that they get put in services, because if they don't, they just, it's keep popping up. So that's definitely the priority there. And to the uptick of illegal dumping, I've had some recent conversations with waste management. And I think that they're offering a lot of ideas and solutions, and hopefully, if we continue to partner, we'll see that decline.
I just wanna say thank you. I mean, you've got a hundred and thirty-seven employees and your task is monumental. A hundred and thirty-seven is not enough. I mean, you went through several divisions where you got four, five, or six managing parks and an entire sewer system. I mean, it's it's really a remarkable job that you guys are doing, so I just wanna say thank you for your leadership, but thank you to all the crew out there doing doing the the work in the heat and extreme weather and extreme cold. Um you know, in in oftentimes in dangerous circumstances, so thank you to uh all of you for everything that you do to support our city.
Thank you.
And I'll ditto that.
Anybody else have comments?
Yes, please. Um you know, our our responsibility on this council and by the staff, the entire city of uh Palmdale is to deliver cities uh services across the board to every single resident uh that is here. Your department handles it in an extraordinary way. Anywhere from the minor little thing like rescuing a puppy or a cat, which happens, uh to uh clearing the roads when it snows, uh so that the traffic can begin to flow again. And everything in between. And uh so, yeah, I want to, I want to thank your department. It's what makes the city of Palmdale a a very livable place and a great place to to raise children and and to do all the rest of the things that human beings do in this town. Uh and it's so essential, and a lot of the public doesn't even realize the kind of work that you do. These little things that people take for granted that are uh essential to quality of life. So uh again, I join the rest of us here uh in in thanking you and and giving you great kudos for what you all do and your employees. Okay.
I just like to give you a round of applause. Okay, thank you for the presentation, and now I will open up public comments that uh re- as a result of the presentation. So if you have comments about the presentation or questions, please submit a form and come on up.
Jason.
I don't know, I thought for sure you'd be here.
Oh, alright.
Well, seeing none, we'll close public comments.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, we have Eugene Hernandez.
Oh, sorry, Eugene.
Thank you.
Once again, um I wonder about the disparity for Public Works for Avenue R for that open ditch from Sierra Highway to Twentieth Street uh East. That that open ditch would not have been allowed in the wealthy white west side. Why is nothing being done? I never see construction crews working there. The poor humble Mexican families who facing that ditch, their children cannot play in the front yard for fear of getting hurt. And I think that that's a great disparity, that the Public Works have just not done any work on that at all. I only seen one work crew. And also, as I mentioned before, on Gable View and Twentieth Street East, the Public Works must have blown their whole budget for orange traffic cones because th- they're all there. And they they haven't filled in that hole. What what does a Public Works need? A NASA en- uh engineer to help them finish these construction parts? Maybe Northrop needs to come in and tell them how to fill in that ditch that's right there? It's it's a safety hazard, because when you drive on that on that road, you're inches away from ongoing traffic. And I can't understand why they can't start working on that, at the very least. And and I I I really feel that they're, and it's also a disparity with this presentation, that all the E V charging stations are on the west side, not on the east side.
Certainly, come on up.
While he's speak, while he's coming up, I just want, we're we're getting some. McAdams Park is getting twelve, and and we're working on it, so in time we'll we'll be getting some E V stations on the east side.
Hello, sir.
Good, I'm Roger Soderstet, longtime Palmdale resident. I moved here for the weather. Couldn't resist that one after Mr. Olson's comments at a previous meeting. Unlike the homeless, I did move here for the weather. Uh they did not. Um this is vitally important, this Public Works stuff. It's the other stuff that sometimes seems should be pushed down in priority, and Public Works should be prioritized even more. This is what the people actually see. They see the roads, the sewers, you know, all this stuff, the parks and everything. This is vitally important. I'm really glad the council's on top of it, and I hope they'll even give more weight to it in the future. Thank you.
I agree with you completely, sir.
There are no more speaker slips on this item?
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments.
Mayor, um Assemblyman Juan Carreiro's here, and I wonder if we could.
Did he wanna come up and speak?
Sure.
Sure, come on up, come say hello.
Well, we're gonna.
Oh, did you say you didn't wanna speak? Too bad.
I came just to watch the meeting. Um I have to start by saying that I miss you. I miss city staff and I miss coming to the council meetings. Uh I just wanted to come in today, uh say hello, and to let you know that I will be bringing a legislative presentation to the city council and the city residents, so that you know what we've been working on and uh what we look to see uh in the next legislative year. Really happy to be here again. I I really miss you, uh and miss every staff member uh and being in these meetings.
You are welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
Mr. Carreiro, excuse me, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, of course.
Um. Yes.
When you were on the council, you were a an advocate for uh taking control of Palmdale Boulevard, which is essential to future development, to addressing the uh vacant areas that go along Palmdale Boulevard, in part which are uh restrained, uh because we don't have control of the Boulevard and and what we can do with it. And and I know that you are uh working uh on a bill that is going to allow us to do that and and meet that uh that challenge, because it is, it's an important change and it is a challenging change. But I wish to thank you uh for your leadership in that.
No, absolutely. That's uh one of the uh bills that we have in our list. Uh we're gonna be setting up a meeting with Caltrans in Sacramento to see how open they are to continuing their track right along Fiftieth to Avenue M, so that they can can go north on uh Avenue M on the fourteen freeway. Uh that's something that uh, as you know, we we talked about that. Uh now in the assembly, that's one of the bills on the list, definitely.
And you were very successful in this legislative period in getting bills before uh the governor and getting them signed.
Yes, I'll give a little snippet of the snippet of the legislative year, and like I said, I think I'll be coming in the uh next council uh to do even further report on what we did. I do believe that we had a a really good year, being our first year in in the legislation in the assembly. Uh we had nine bills on the governor's desk, I'm really proud of that. Um uh he did veto three of the bills, but he signed six of them. We were also very successful in bringing five point five million dollars to the district, distributed across the entire district from the Antolo Valley all the way to the Victor Valley. Not only that, but listening to the conversation about E Vs, uh we were very successful in continuing to have uh an allocation of uh our D N B fees continued to be for hydrogen infrastructure. That is gonna be the key. I hear the concerns about uh having electric vehicles and city uh heavy-duty vehicles. I do believe that hydrogen is the answer to that. Uh I believe that that's us, the the future, uh together with electrifying uh the state as well. I do have dr- drive a hybrid, a bolt, I know how important they are. Uh but yeah, we need to have more electric vehicle stations, and I agree, we need to have some more in the east side. Uh I know that you're working on it, and I know that there are two in the water park, there are two electric vehicle charging stations there, but we need to do more. And in that sense, I I I'm committing to help bring those resources, uh because we have to be able to provide uh the infrastructure that the state is mandating on on Californians, absolutely. So I've been keeping an eye, and uh I heard the concerns, and we're we're uh working on that in Sacramento, absolutely. But again, I'll I'll be back in the next council meeting, give you a more detailed report. Uh and looking forward to continuing to call Palmdale a place to live. Very proud to be a resident of Palmdale.
Thank you, Mark, thank you for coming.
Before you run off, I just wanna say congratulations. It's really a remarkable thing for a first-year legislator to get six bills signed. Uh you were um a tireless advocate for issues that directly affect our city and our Antolo Valley, specifically because you served on this council and you understand them. I mean, when you get into detail about all the stuff that you were able to accomplish, you got the A D U, you know, bill done, you got so many, you got the the hydrogen uh bill accomplished, you brought millions of dollars of resources to our community. I mean, it really was a a remarkable effort, so thank you for your leadership in Sacramento. Uh on the on the hydrogen piece, I'm I'm actually, we should probably sit down and and talk. I'm working um to bring the first uh hydrogen fueling station uh to the east side. And it should be uh ready to for for public consumption soon. Um but we should talk about uh how we're gonna unfold the entire hydrogen uh infrastructure map in the Antolo Valley.
Yeah, and we're bringing one to the other side of the district as well, because I believe that's what we need to also have available for residents. Um and this is gonna continue to get even better. I'm really happy to be the chair of local government. Uh that is something that I really enjoy, being a city planner, being a council member. Uh and I'm really looking forward to uh the good things that we're gonna be bringing to this, the, not only the state, but the district. So again, I'll I'll be back again and give you a further uh detailed explanation of the legislative package. And yeah, Palmdale Boulevard, we need to take over that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so now we're gonna actually move on to um. Item number five is the public comment rules. I'm sure you've already read those. We'll move on to item number six, public comments. This is public comments for consent calendar, appointments, and closed session items only. So now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, appointment, and the closed sec- uh session. Each speaker is allotted three minutes total for the entirety of the above selections. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Eugene Hernandez, seven point three, seven point five, and thirteen point one, and it's three minutes in the society.
Yeah, once again, um I think that the city should compensate the people who have been inconvenienced on Avenue R. You know, those poor people, they don't have the assets, they they've been, they, I don't know how they 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 managed to park their cars on there, but they've been inconvenienced for a very long time. And I think that that the city should recompensate them for them. If this was on the west side, you can be sure the wealthy white people would be angry and they would be here at the city council asking for compensation. Uh on another note, I I agree totally with Mr. Lowe's uh suggestion to have more trees here in Palmdale. As you see, this is unprecedented, us to have a heat wave right in the middle of October, you know, it's global warming. And the more trees we have here, the lower the temperature will be for the city, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
No more speaker slips on this item?
Alright, then we'll go ahead and close public comments on consent calendar, appointments, and closed session items. So if I could go ahead and uh go to seven point one, waiver for reading of resolutions and ordinances to be considered and voted on at this meeting.
Voted.
Okay, that first and a second. Do we wanna electronic?
That's gonna be voted on on the fullness of the consent calendar. It's a part of the consent calendar now.
Oh, it's part of the consent calendar. Oh, okay. Okay, so do we just have to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes.
So before, well, before we do that, I'd like to pull seven point five, please. Okay. And then if there are no other items that the council would like to pull, I'll make a motion to adopt the balance of the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second should adopt it, with the exception of seven point five.
Okay, can you put the motion a second in?
I'm trying, there you go, oops.
Thank you. Start voting.
Motion passes with five yes votes, so if we can go ahead and do it and do seven point five.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know if staff wants to come and give a a brief report on on just what this is, and then I'll follow up. It's a, it's a fairly simple sort of administrative item, but I just wanted to make a comment about it, so thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Uh yeah, this is a resolution for, um it's a blanket resolution, that's what it's called. It's to allow Public Works to pursue grants from the Department of Resources, Recycling, and Recovery. We get a lot of grants from them. Uh they help us with a lot of programs, like Lynn mentioned, uh for example. We're really, we're rolling out organics programs right now. And to help our residents with it, we have purchased several of these containers that can go in your kitchen, so you can store your organics. And when you fill it up, you can put it in your big organics container for collection. And so we're distributing those right now, and we do a filter exchange for used oil filters where we're encouraging people to recycle their used oil and filters by giving them a
by giving them a free filter in exchange for recycling those filters. And there's a large number of other projects that we do with those grants.
So how do we get the recycling bucket?
I don't know. Yeah, well, we want to educate our residents, because unfortunately, when something is free to a lot of people, it loses its value, and a lot of people want a dozen of them if they can get them and never use them. So we're actually doing an education process where we're ensuring that everyone, our residents, understand the purpose of them and how to use them, so that they're using them properly. So we're trying to be smart about the way we're distributing them, because we couldn't get enough to, you know, we got enough for about like ten percent of our residential population. So we want to be smart about how to get them, but we'll make sure you get one.
Okay. It would look bad if the mayor didn't do the recycling of the organics.
Of course, yeah.
People are watching.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your report. I pulled this item only because we often get criticism that the city staff and city team is not pursuing grant funds that are available, and this is a prime example of exactly where we are doing just that. Last fiscal year, 2022, 2023, we applied for and were awarded approximately $275,000 to support various recycling and sustainability programs, including some of the ones that you've already mentioned, our oil and filter curbside program, our partnership with Palmdale's Auto Zones, the purchase and installation of eleven water bottle filling stations in various parks and facilities, and as the mayor mentioned, the purchase of kitchen counter food pails for residents to promote our organics recycling. These are just some of the examples of the money that we were able to access. And I just didn't want it to go without saying, in our consent calendar, and you know, the residents who are maybe here present or watching online aren't aware of all of the hard work that you guys are doing. This is, like I said, an administrative item, it's sort of a blanket resolution that allows us to continue to pursue that kind of funding. But I think it's important for our public to know that we are utilizing the resolution, we are being successful when we apply for these grants, and we are actually realizing the benefits of them because they are reaching our residents. So I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you for your leadership and for bringing this item before the council.
This ties into the mattress program too, right?
Well, the mattress program, yeah, we did get a grant from the mattress recycling council. That was a separate from CalRecycle.
Okay.
But yeah, well, for example, Lynn also mentioned paint care.
Yeah.
Mattresses and paint, you pay a surcharge to have those materials recycled when you buy them. So we're working with independent agencies to do programs for those. But yeah, mattress recycling, we did receive a grant from them, and it wasn't in the list of the grants that we received, where we worked with a multifamily complex, trying to figure out how they can take advantage of our bulk item pickup collection program. Because a lot of times, when unfortunately, when families from multifamily units are moving, they don't know what to do with their couches or mattresses, et cetera. And unfortunately, you will find those illegally dumped near those complexes.
Yeah, I bring that up because people ask, I know that's been a hot button issue for people, is how do I dispose of this mattress? So it's, yeah, so even above and beyond the CalRecycle, we're receiving more money to help with that. Oh, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
Well, I made a motion to appoint.
Are you there? I'll second it then.
Right.
With this electronic moving, everybody's on it. Okay, so there's a motion and a second? You guys did it, okay.
Start voting.
Motion passes with five yes votes. All right, moving on to item number eight, appointment. Eight point one, city council nomination and appointment of one member to the Board of Library Trustees. I would like to take the opportunity to select Stephanie Oriana.
I'll second that.
Are you here, Stephanie? No? Okay.
Is Mr. Chatters here?
Ronald here? Come on up. We want to give you a chance to speak before we vote.
Perfect, I would be excited to speak, but thank you.
Okay.
That being said, Mayor Bettencourt, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to apply to be a part of the Board of Trustees. I am a long-term resident of the city of Palmdale. My family moved here when I was in high school. So like many families, they moved here to provide me and my siblings a better opportunity. And I got just that. One way in which I got that good opportunity was spending lots of time at the Palmdale Library. Based on my academic credentials, you can see that some people might call me a nerd.
What's wrong with that?
But yes, so learning, reading were always important to me. Prior to us moving here, the library was my best friend. That was the San Fernando Library on San Fernando Road, actually, sorry, not San Fernando, McClay. But when we moved here, the library was also my refuge. Many of my assignments, whether they were in high school, undergrad, grad school, law school, they all required me to attend the library. When I studied for the bar, I studied here at the Palmdale Library. I studied at Acton Public Library, and I studied at the West Hollywood Library. Most recently, I utilized the local library to do research on Juneteenth for the Lancaster Juneteenth Celebration. However, to my surprise, one thing that concerned me is that the library still looks and feels the same as it did in 1996, when I was a little boy. To some, that's sort of a feeling of nostalgia, like you can go back into a place and feel like it's home. But having gone to school and lived in other places for my sort of academic credentials, I know how important libraries can be. I know the purpose that they can serve for a community, whether it's the opportunity for people to engage in discourse, whether it's for the opportunity for them to access resources, whether it's resume building, or whatever the case may be. My concern with the library is that it has not moved with the ages. So if I were given the opportunity as a trustee, I would help as much as possible, you guys, as well as the director of the library and the city staff, in moving the library to a place that it sort of serves everyone. It's advancing with technology, it's advancing with the times, and that when residents walk in, they feel like they've entered a place of innovation. This is an area of innovation, whether it's aerospace, and sort of the library should reflect and mimic that, in my opinion. In terms of my service to the community, am I limited on time? Should I stop? Okay, in terms of my service to the community, all I can tell you is that when I commit myself to something, I totally commit myself to it. You can reach out to some of the people I've worked with, whether that's Jason Cottle, the city manager at Lancaster, Assemblyman Correa was just here. I worked with his staff as well for the Lancaster Juneteenth Celebration, and sort of building community and building something positive for the community. So if you're looking for someone that would be dedicated, determined, and focused on taking the library to the next step, I would be that person.
Mayor.
So Ronald, you will be happy to know that we have big plans on upgrading our library. I'm so glad to hear you speak, because originally I'm thinking the other applicant is actually a librarian.
Yes, I did see that.
But now after hearing you speak and your passion, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to have an open discussion. Mr. Loa, what say you?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for applying.
No, thank you.
And for being here. I think both of you are very, very qualified in different ways, but it's a good thing. So whatever the outcome is tonight, thank you so much for applying. There may be other opportunities for you to join if in case you don't get the vote tonight.
Perfect.
It's a very important thing, as you pointed out, it's transitioning, modernizing, getting up with the day. And I believe that if we can speak to the actual nomination now that's been made, it seems to me that she does bring incredible credentials as well in the library field.
Yeah.
And probably would be instrumental with her background in assisting us transition to...
I wonder, Mr. Attorney, if we can have an alternate, like have a main trustee and then also have an alternate?
You certainly may.
Well, that would work wonderfully.
Can we just do that now without any...
Make an amendment to the mayor's motion to appoint Stephanie and ahead.
I don't know what the rules are.
I apologize, so currently, the board needs to decide as a five-member board? It doesn't have an alternate at this time? So you would have to amend the ordinance?
You can't amend them, or in this instance, consensus is you will have a person that's an alternate. The real question is, when does the alternate go into play? That typically is if a board member leaves. It's not their sick one meeting, you don't have that meeting-by-meeting transition. You have somebody in the wings, should there be a permanent opening. That's, you can certainly do that. If you want to get into a greater complexity, we probably want to bring it back with an amendment. So having a willing fill-in when and if an opening occurs in the permanent body, you can certainly do that now.
Well, it seems to me that if we go about changing the structure of our library board, it probably needs a little bit more than just, you know, reacting here and trying to do that. But I do think the idea is a good one. There should be an alternate in case somebody is not participating, or in this case, a resignation that took place. But I think we need to do it in a more official way. So I believe that Ms. Oriana does bring the kind of background and experience that we need at this time, and then I think that Mr. Chatters would be an excellent consideration in the future, but that's my opinion.
I think we need both of them, really, truly, because with the changes that are gonna be happening with our library, we need her experience for sure, but we need his passion.
Well, and I also have to add, the library lacks diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so that's a very important element. So you have someone that has sort of the librarian skills.
Right.
But does that person also possess the skills to bring in the diversity and equity that's required to reflect the community?
I think he has experience in that, according to the resume.
So that's for me the key. So if you have a population that's constantly changing, so the Palmdale in 1997, when we first moved here in 1996, or my family first relocated in the eighties, is not the same Palmdale that it is today. And so the library has to reflect that diversity as well in the community. And it's not just a simple issue of creating policies of whether someone has to pay a fine, whether certain books can be loaned for a period of time. It goes as deep as selecting books that reflect the neighborhood, that reflect the things that people need to read, want to read, and that will more importantly, build them up into a community that's going to engage in discourse, that's going to change this to a place that not just anyone wants to live, but everyone wants to live because Palmdale supports the change of ideas.
And looking at Ms. Oriana's resume, she does have that kind of background and experience and history. And I believe that she also is part of the community that is now the majority of the population in Palmdale. So to the extent that we engage in that kind of thing, what's essential is the background, experience that the person brings. And again, I believe that Ms. Oriana is the person indicated at this time.
And if I might just add, the complexities keep compounding as we're hearing people speak. Across the state, there is a whole lot of interest in how collections are built, so to speak, what books are ordered, what books are not, what books are retained. I think before you do anything at this point, you're kind of at the edge of a little bit of a Pandora's box. So for tonight, sticking with your routine of picking one, and then we can look at it and get you setting an alternate member, all of this can come. But right now, since we're touching on a lot of very live-wire issues, shooting from the hip's probably not our best course.
City Attorney, what do you think about us? I don't know when our next library board meeting is, what if we table this and have a chance for you to go back and look at this?
I think you're brilliant, sir. Well, it takes a motion, right, to do that?
A motion to table?
Before we do that, can I just make a comment? So for the benefit of those that are watching, it's just so that everybody can understand why we're having this sort of level of engagement in terms of an appointment with two applicants. We have two applicants that are extraordinarily overqualified. I mean, we've got one who is a lifelong librarian and served in various capacities around the country, in children's libraries, in the Air Force, United States Air Force Library, all over the place, and in various different capacities. She has dedicated herself to library services. And then on the other hand, we've got Mr. Chatters, who is admitted to three, admitted to practice law in three states, California, Maryland, New York, including two of the hardest bars that pass, California and New York. You said you were a nerd, but you're a nerd doing good stuff.
Yeah.
You work for Neighborhood Legal Services, you work for Just Attention International, you've done work at the Office of the State's Attorneys. I mean, you've done remarkable work, and so I think we're all sort of torn because we want to be able to tap into the talent of both of you. And then hearing your passion for innovation, which is huge in terms of this council's sort of perspective on where we would like the library to be moving forward.
Yeah, we certainly are lucky to have a level, a high level of caliber applicant, both of them. It's not making it easy. That's why I motioned to table this. I don't think they're gonna miss, I don't think we're gonna miss any library meetings. I don't, I don't believe we will, I don't have the schedule in front of me. But Mr. City Attorney, is that something we can do and bring back?
But before we just table it, if we could do something simultaneous to that, rather than just table it for the next meeting, maybe ask the city attorney in conjunction with the city manager to report back, or even bring back to us a revised ordinance to incorporate an alternate position on the library board.
That would be my motion, is to table it so they can bring back alternate. Okay.
We have a motion and a second, do you want to do a voice vote or electronic?
I'll note it in a minute.
Okay.
And we thank you for being here, thank you for your interest in improving our library.
No, I thank you for inviting me, and I thank you for your time.
Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, voice vote?
Sure.
Sure.
But we haven't voted.
Do you guys want to go ahead and vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, so we're gonna table this item?
Yes.
To which meeting?
I don't know if it takes enough to come back with this.
Table and direct the city attorney to report back as to a draft ordinance to incorporate an alternate position on the library board. So it should probably take...
My motion, City Attorney, my motion would be for thirty days, does that sound adequate?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, table this item for thirty days.
Oh, she's here!
I just came, I just finished my phone call.
Oh, yes. Okay.
I think we should get her, give her the opportunity to speak.
We haven't closed public discussion anytime, so it's to the mayor's discretion.
Come on up. Introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Oriana, and I applied to be one of the board members for the library board of trustees. You all have seen my resume, correct? So is there anything in specific you'd like to know, or just an introduction of myself and my application?
Tell us all about you. Why should we pick you over someone else?
Okay, so I have dedicated my career to library services, I'm a librarian. I have been a librarian for the past seven years. I specialized in youth services for a really long time. But I've held leadership roles and supervisory roles in libraries for most of my career. I was a youth services supervisor for the whole county of Monoma County Libraries, and currently I am the library director of the Edwards Air Force Base Library. So I have a lot of experience. I have written policies, procedures, implemented so many new technologies in libraries. I'm very advanced in librarianship and just in libraries in general. Budgeting, personnel, anything you can really think about, I've done in libraries.
And what is your experience with our library?
So I actually was born and raised in Palmdale. I grew up on 10th Street East over here, and I use the library myself. So I went to the children's library when I was here.
Right, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, and I have used this library, and it was my library. I used to walk there, I am very dedicated to my community. And I decided that when I saw this position, that it would be a really great way to serve my community in a different kind of capacity in libraries.
Excellent, thank you.
I'd like to make an alternate motion to the motion to table. And that motion is that we go ahead and vote on the current member for the library board, and then bring back the issue of whether we should have an alternate. So instead of having the table, my alternate motion is that we vote tonight on the member and bring back the issue in the future regarding an alternate.
Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a motion and a second on the table. Procedurally, is it not appropriate to vote on, to call for... Um, procedurally, is it not appropriate to, to vote on, uh, to call for the question on that? Either have it rescinded or to call for the question on that motion?
Alternate motions are allowed, and if it threatens the main motion, it should be heard first.
I, I agree with that.
So I will second that motion.
When you have one, you can challenge, if you will, that main motion with a replacement one, the alternate one. This points out, we've been trying to get a, a set of policies in place for a year to clarify this. But this is consistent with where our drafts are, which you've seen a couple of times. So this is a good testing of it working.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
So are you rescinding the motion then?
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion, I'll make a second, uh, for Ms., with Mr. Loa's motion, and then we can bring back the, uh, the alternate position within thirty days.
So just to be clear, we're voting today, um?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So I wanna be clear on what we're doing here, all right?
I'm putting the motion in, motion and a second. I'm gonna go ahead and record that motion in a second.
We don't need a motion to vote tonight, it's already on the agenda.
Right, so I had already made the motion for her.
The, uh, alternate position for a future meeting, President.
For this, the alternate, yes. So I made a motion to select her for the library board.
Right, and I seconded.
And she was seconded originally. Do we wanna put it in the computer?
Yes, I'll put it in. Start voting. Let me take a seat.
Yes.
Well, you were just congratula- congratulations.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Thank you very much.
Sorry for the procedural sort of confusion, but congratulations.
Yeah, we had two great applicants and we're trying to find a place for both of you to be honest with you, so.
Sounds great.
I, I hope that you, uh, were able to meet the gentleman that was before you, cause you guys may be working together.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chatters, I just wanna say thank you again for applying, but I mean, please don't be discouraged. Because it will, it will come back, it will come back as an ordinance revision, as an alter- alternate position. But also, there are a variety of other, uh, commissions that the city, um, that the city has. We've got planning, we've got a variety of other ones that may have, uh, vacancies that, that come available in the very near future. So please keep, uh, keep your eye on those because you clearly are qualified to serve in, in any of those capacities. So thank you so much.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much for stepping up.
Yeah, of course.
And I was very impressed with both of, uh, of the resumes. Uh, but I believe you're gonna bring the right kind of experience and direction that we need because our library is moving forward into the twenty-first century, which it needs to do, as was pointed out by Mr. Chatters.
Yes.
So thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, of course.
And, uh, welcome to the city of Palmdale.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
And just an FYI, there are two recruitments going on, it is the, um, Audit Committee and the, um, Visit Palmdale.
Ah.
There are two recruitments going on, just FYI.
Okay. So please see our city clerk for, for where the applications are available on our website for those, thanks.
Okay, so we are moving on to item number nine, public hearing, nine point one, approve a service agreement for a lighting fixture retrofit project with, crosstown electrical and data incorporated in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for a term of one year.
Mayor and members of the city council, uh, what you have before you here is a proposed, um, project to replace fifty metal halide lights with LED lights. These lights are both run on wind and solar energy and they have the units built into the lights. And, uh, we're recommending to approve, uh, agreement number eight eight five two two with crosstown electrical and data, to install those lights at a price of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, well, the recommendation is to open the public hearing for this to hear public comments. And then we're recommending to, uh, close that and approve the agreement.
So has the technology improved for the wind? I don't know if you were here, I've been, I've been around a long, long time, but we actually had like a pilot program, I want to say it was at Walmart on Tenth Street where we had the light posts with the little, um, windmills at the top.
Yeah.
And they just disappeared.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But is something similar to this?
The technology has come a long way and, um, we're really actually eyeing this technology for future needs because we're not doing a full pole replacement, we're just doing a head replacement.
Okay.
But we've done a lot of research and these are the only, uh, pole, uh, only, uh, lighting manufacturers that we can find that can incorporate an EV charging station into their pole as well. So we wanna pilot these lights before we start buying a lot of these poles and putting them in, uh, parking areas where we have a requirement to have a certain number of EV charging stations. And so we wanna make sure the technology does work well, it does have a, I believe it's a ten-year warranty. But we also, maintenance wants to watch these lights and make sure that they're delivering as promised. But even if the wind component of those lights stops functioning, it also has that solar component. So it'll still be generating energy for the lights and it's not a windmill on top of it, it's embedded in the light, so.
Okay.
Unless you're standing directly under it and you're looking up, you won't be able to see it.
Okay, so we're actually changing the lights in these fixtures too, right?
Yeah, the heads.
So I heard that the new lights would be brighter than the previous ones.
They'll be brighter and a better quality light, yes.
So that'll help give some e- extra security for people that are over there using the facilities, okay, great.
Especially since this is a designated park and ride lot, so we wanna make sure that.
Definitely all the security measures we can, yep.
I'll, I'll move to approve this item.
Well, after we have the public hearing, I have two, two quick questions.
Sure.
Um, one, um, so we're retrofitting fifty fixtures, i- is that the total, how many total are at the, the, uh, Palona Vista Park and Ride? Is that only portion of that?
There's more than fifty, but since we're using dedicated funds, these are funds for transportation-related projects and this is a park and ride lot. That's why we're doing the retrofits on those fifty, it's the park and ride lot portion of the park.
Right, cause, cause Palona Vista is bifurcated where you got the park and ride in one section and public parking in the other for, for sports events and things. So we're gonna do the park and ride section.
Right, and we'll see how we can retrofit those other ones at, at a future time.
And then my follow-up question is, assuming this pilot project goes, you know, incredibly well, do you have any idea as to where else we would prioritize implementing this technology?
Well, excuse me, nothing's been decided on, but like I said, if we're doing new construction projects in a parking lot, close to a quarter of those spaces need to be, have EV charging stations in them. So that's why we're looking at this because that is a lot of electric vehicle charging stations that we need to supply. So it's good to have this technology on hand because installing an EV charging station alone is very expensive. But since the lights are gonna be there anyways and it'll allow us to realize some economies of scale.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council?
No, I'm just, I'm a huge fan when we upgrade these, these lights because it saves so much money, like it says nine thousand dollar savings in the first year. It's just, uh, yeah, what are we using now, high pressure sodiums?
Uh, metal halide.
Metal halides.
So yeah, these will be LED lights, uh, use less energy, it's a lot, a lot better quality and.
Significant amount of energy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and now is the time we're gonna call for public comments on this item. Eugene?
Yes. Uh, I, I forgot to mention this on, uh, uh, consent calendar, but I'm sure you're aware of the, the concept, the broken window theory. That when you don't fix a window, well, there's a situation now happening on Tenth Street East and Palmdale Boulevard where three businesses have went out, one, one, uh, big window has been broken. There's a crowd of between ten and forty gang members that hang out there. Latino businesses have said they fear that corner is getting deteriorated. I never see any sheriffs, deputies ever patrol that area. And I think the city should step in there because it, it's getting worse. And you have, the only business that is flourishing is smart liquor. And I think they're in violation of ABC, oh, um, um, violations because these gang members that are hanging out there, who knows what they're doing? But, um, we had a presentation about the correlation between liquor stores and crime. And I think that corner there is a center of crime. And I think the city should step in and try to rehabilitate that area.
I appreciate your comments, did you have anything on these?
Yeah.
No?
Did you say that three, those all out, did you mean that three lights were out or?
No, three businesses are out. One has a big window that's been smashed and it looks even worse now.
Yeah.
And.
Mayor, may I comment on that?
Sure.
Uh, actually code enforcement's all over this, um, they're, they're working on it, it's been brought, uh, as, as a major problem, the broken window theory that you're addressing is, is very significant. Uh, I just wanted to, to say that on the, um, EV charging stations, almost all of them are on the east side.
Awesome.
Yeah, there's only, uh, one at Ranger Vista Park, the rest of them are located in the east side.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But, uh, the city's dealing with the issue that you bring up, it's a very significant problem. Uh, it affects the other businesses that are right there.
Thank you.
And, um, it's getting done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get back to topic on item number nine, public hearing for the approval of service agreement for lighting fixture retrofit project. Is there anyone who wants to comment on the lighting fixture retrofit project?
No speaker cards on this item, mayor?
Okay, then we will close public comments.
And then move item nine point one.
I'll second it. Off the vote.
I had the, actually I had the motion.
Oh, it's already in?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second, oops.
You have to do, you second.
I did already, it, no, what happened? Why does it keep coming back?
Oh, there it goes. You're faster than the computer, sorry. We all press the buttons as they happen, I know what happens. We got a little button pushing problem here. And then Andrea for second.
Yes, okay. There we go, start voting. One more?
One more? Austin?
Which one?
Which one?
You got it, you got it, you got it.
It was Austin.
There we go.
Okay, motion passes with five yeses. Okay, now we are moving to, nine point two, approval of amendment number one to the design build agreement with Snyder Electric for added energy project services in the amount of six million one hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. That was hard for me to say.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, thank you, yeah. Uh, this, uh, proposed project is, uh, phase two of our agreement with Schneider Electric. It was, uh, our intention to, uh, do all the recommended, uh, energy efficiency retrofits and phases. And, uh, yes, it's a little over six million dollars that we're proposing with this amendment. Um, most of those, uh, most of those costs, well over five and a half million dollars of it, would be to do LED lighting retrofits, uh, for our ball field lights. Those are very expensive and, uh, very expensive to, uh, change out. Um, and, uh, it'll be, it'll happen at, uh, it'll happen at Best of the West, Marie Kerr Park and Palona Vista Park. And, uh, I would like to add, uh, Best of the West, beyond the energy savings, we need to look at just the quality of the park and what the uses are. And these lights are due for being changed out to begin with. By retrofitting them to LED lights, they will, uh, last longer, they'll be a better quality light. And we will re- realize some energy savings.
You have a question, Andrea?
Yeah.
I, I have to take a deep breath before I.
Yeah.
And don't look at the second line, this is just the amendment to the, to the actual contract.
Uh, my question is, uh, what, first I wanna say thank you, Schne- Schneider Electric, I mean, the work that you guys are doing is, uh, remarkable uh, in terms of upgrading our entire, um, lighting infrastructure and HVAC and, and so forth. Uh, the efficiencies that we're gonna realize through your work are, are really, um, gonna make a, a, a significant difference. My question is, in phase one, this is for, what, what's being proposed here is an amendment for phase two. Phase one of the project encompasses, um, also some sports field LED retrofits that include also, uh, Marie Kerr. And then the lighting efficiency project also includes the same five sites that are noted in phase two. Can you just explain to me?
Sure.
What is different in phase two because they're the same sites?
Right.
It seems to me.
Well, what's going in at Marie Kerr Park right now are brand new lights for the soccer fields. What we're recommending are to retrofit the current, uh, ball field lights that are out there. Best of the West and I believe it's one softball field that currently, yeah, that has an old lighting. Uh, the facilities that were mentioned, it's because what happened is when we were budgeting this, there, we were using on-bill financing for phase one. Uh, on-bill financing won't pay for the entire cost. So we had to come back for phase two to realize the matching costs that the Edison's requiring us to come up with.
To finish.
To be able to do those projects.
To finish the project, so it's like a phase one beat.
Well, it's not even finish it, we can't even, yeah, we can't even start.
Yeah.
We're still waiting on Edison authorization, we've been working on that for months and, uh, unfortunately you can't rush Edison in those reviews. And so it's, that's why those projects haven't moved forward yet, it's, we've got everything submitted to Edison and we're just waiting for their approval.
Thank you for that clarification, I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on, because it says phase one's sort of the same locations as phase two. And I wanted to be clear that there actually is different scope of work, uh, for both phases.
Yeah, and also with HVAC units, it's for testing and air balancing. That's to maximize the benefits out of the new HVAC units and maintenance, uh, after we, when we were working on this, uh, when we had everything budgeted, uh, we had a discussion with maintenance and they pointed out that that wasn't included, but they highly recommended us doing it. So that's why it's also a part of phase two.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Um, a lot of this falls under the capital improvement project, which is, um, projects that have been in the pipeline for years, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
This is nothing new.
Yeah, and, and this was identified in a report prepared by Musco about all, all of our sports field lights. And so this wasn't something new, it was something that Schneider Electric came up with a way for us to start moving forward with those needed projects.
And it's important to maintain our parks and make it a place where people can probably feel safe. Um, what is the life expectancy for each of these lights, like how long, like ten years, twenty years, what's, when do we plan to have to do this again?
Okay, well, Schneider Electric here, they could better answer that question, so I'll let them.
Hi, good evening.
I'm not trying to be cheap, I'm just trying to understand.
No, I, I love the questions, that's, uh, that's exactly why I'm here. I'm Mark Starkey, I presented to you back in March first, uh, I think for the first phase. And then I also brought our construction services manager who is a, a new resident, I guess, of Palmdale cause we have a job trailer out here at Marie Kerr Park and lay down areas, so, uh, we're, we're here for several months of construction. Um, to answer your question, uh, typically LED, uh, retrofits like what we're talking about lasts about fifteen years. Um, so not only is there utility savings, uh, and energy reduction as a result of the more efficient LED solutions, but also there's operations and maintenance savings. So when you combine the utility savings and the operational savings of this phase two, it's, uh, four point nine million dollars over twenty years that it equates to.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Mr. Loa, go ahead.
Uh, one of, one of the questions that I asked in our briefing is, uh, how do you arrive at the, um, representation that you made that the city will save almost two point one million dollars over the, over twenty-year period? How, how do you arrive at that, uh, amount?
Yes, so, um, I wasn't sure, I checked with Ben and Lynn if you received a slide deck and, and so I brought five copies of it, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
Okay, great, thank you. So, um, how that was arrived is, um, it's a, a, a cost savings, um, sheet that basically where we see the annual utility savings, uh, for the efficiencies. And so we model that from the wattage of the current, uh, bulbs, for example, on lighting and then what the lower wattage now is and what's required to power that more efficient lighting. And then we obviously model that and multiply that across how many locations we're doing a little bit of interior, exterior lighting, but we're also doing a lot of ball fields. And then, um, we have the utility savings and then we also, the CEC, um, uh, recommends a certain value, uh, for O and M savings. And so you combine those two numbers and then you, uh, cross that over twenty years. You do add a little bit of figures from the Department of Energy for, um, utility rate increases and then a little bit co- uh, two percent inflation, um, but that's how it, uh, expands over to four, it's actually four point nine million dollars in this phase over twenty years, so it's on page four right there. I also have a, a sheet here as well, which goes year by year, I can also leave this with the group. And so I apologize if I wasn't part of the city council briefings, I just wanna make sure you got the material that we prepared.
No, I just wondered, you know, I, I know that we're not pulling figures out of the sky and, and putting them in reports, but I just wanted to see what the substantive part of this was.
Right.
And, and I appreciate your, uh, coming back with this. Um, so, I mean, but this is essential, don't get me wrong, I mean, I, I think that this is essential to continue, um, you know, furnishing our parks with, uh, with the lighting that they need, I mean, that's essential for, you know, good service and, uh, and supplying, uh, the community with, uh, park needs. But I have a question with Mr. Lucha there, thank you though for your presentation.
Thank you.
And this is maybe a little bit irrelevant, but, uh, when my grandchildren were playing, um, Little League over in Massari Park, the scoreboard was out a couple of years ago, has that been fixed?
Unfortunately, I don't have the answer for that, um, we're more concentrated on the energy efficiency projects, so.
Can you find out, because uh, that was needed back then and uh,
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't know whether it's been fixed since then, but if, if we could fang that out, it'd be great.
Yeah, I'll check in with uh, maintenance, C I P.
Let me know, please.
To figure it out.
All right.
But, so to put it simply, as far as cost savings, we're saving every time the lights are on, we're saving per kilowatt hour. As, you know, as everyone pays for power, it's by the kilowatt hour. And I know, not only that, but maintenance, like bulbs getting changed. You know, LEDs don't need to get changed as much as metal hall lights, for example.
And uh, they're very difficult lights to change out, I remember working on one, one once, uh, I'm trying to do a retrofit. Someone from maintenance went and took a picture from the top and it wasn't his intention, but I almost fell looking down from that light and a picture of it and, like you said, it, it's a, it's very difficult, it's very difficult to replace those lights. And uh, they're much higher quality lights and uh, I think uh, those using, playing at, at those facilities will really appreciate the better quality light that we're going to have out there.
Yeah, very good.
To your point, also the parking lot lights at Dome at Masari continue to flicker and I get that complaint all the time, so.
We just pick on you because you happen to be there, Mr. Lucha.
Well, no, yeah, I'm ha- I'm happy to hear this because uh, well, we always have a lot of projects that we're looking at, but it's good to know where some other complaints are because we're here during the day and, you know, we don't hear from people using the parks at night, so, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, um, and now we're going to go ahead and open public comments for this item.
There are no speaker cards on this item?
Okay, hmm, then I'll go ahead and close public comments. Any additional comments from council before we call for the vote?
I moved to.
Nope, I already moved.
Oh, she moved, you'll be the second, Mr. Loa?
Oh, you did it, okay.
Oh, you were first, okay, there we go, first or second, let's go ahead and call for the. Motion passes with five yeses, congratulations, gentlemen, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, now we are on to item number ten, non-agenda is public comments. Now is the time for public, public participation on items not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is allotted two minutes total on items not listed on the agenda, do we have any speaker cards? We have Eugene Hernandez.
I attended the Human Relations Commission as well as Andrea attended, and it was nothing but a clown show. When, there was a presentation there that was um, organized by Borreto de Barrio regarding um, alcohol consumption and the correlation between liquor stores. And apparently, Mr. Curly thought that presentation was meant for him. He interrupted that presentation, which was meant for the public and for the commission, and he acted as though he was the one, the star of the show. In addition to that meeting and witnessed by Ms. Alarcon, the, your staff member, Ms. Wafi, every time the commission would ask her, her a question, she could not answer it. She had to go to Mr. Curly, who went on and on and restricted the, 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 the purpose of, of the commission. He gave incorrect information, he was, he obstructed the whole purpose of that meeting. It was outrageous the way they both behaved and it, 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 uh, it, it really subverted the purpose of the Human Relations Commission. I, I think both should be reprimanded, in fact, I, I think you should fire Mr. Curly as this attorney, because he has given incorrect information time after time at city council meetings. What, last meeting, when, when a student asked, when can a public talk? He said only on agenda items. It totally ignoring the fact that people could talk like today on non-agenda items and on, on, on open hearings. I, I think, I think Ms. Wafi is totally eh, uh, in, unprofessional in her handling of this commission, and I've seen other staff members and other lawyers such as in the city planning commission who do a superb job, but these two have to go.
Thank you. Erica Garcia.
Good evening, it's, it's Jacque Villas with Eric A. Garcia, hi. Uh, good evening, I just want to say thank you, um, city councilwoman and mayor for um, supporting my event. I had the second mental health walk in uh, Saturday, October fourteenth, so we had more people this year, it was double and um, more activities and it was um, a day full of hope and I had speakers, so I just want to say thank you for the support, for putting mental health awareness.
And I want to apologize for not being there, I was out of state, so otherwise I would have been there.
Oh, thank you, that means a lot, so thank you, I know Andrea um, showed up, so I hope it was something that.
No, it was, it was a remarkable, moving uh, morning. I mean, your story, the strength and resilience and perseverance that you demonstrate day in and day out, to honor your son, uh, to uplift all of those who are struggling, uh, you know, in, with the plight of mental illness. It was your second, second uh, mental health awareness uh, and resource fair. But it was so well attended, you had so many vendors, you had so many youth out, there were, you know, you see corporate sponsors who brought their entire team, I mean, Trevino Lombra, I don't know how many, maybe, I think I saw twenty or so, or so of their, you know, staff and family members, but every entity uh, brought a good number of people, the energy was so positive, uh, and, and I'm, I'm thinking about it now and, and gonna tear up again, but you know, you release doves uh, in memory of your son and I honestly don't know how you do it, um, but I'm very thankful that you do, so thank you.
That means a lot, it's just trying to save lives, you know, and put it out there, because Eric didn't have any signs, he was happy, good, good student with plans and then I just got the call, so just put in the awareness, but thank you for always supporting and.
You know, you know that, uh, I'm in complete support of that, and mental, the mental health issue is, is a crisis in this, in our valley and, and here in the city. And, you know, your experience uh, in losing your son that way, um, epitomizes unfortunately uh, that problem. Uh, but I believe that, that you have unanimous support here for addressing mental health. And I believe that your efforts, I could, I couldn't be there on, on uh, for the walk, but uh, um, your efforts, I believe, are actually helping uh, curtail the problem and, and helping people address that. Families that are affected that sometimes simply do not know.
Right.
Who to go to, who to call to help them. And unfortunately, the present law of the state of California regarding mental health does not provide any assistance because a lot of people don't meet the fifty-one fifty criteria. And uh, and therefore the family struggles um, with these mentally ill people uh, that ought, that ought to be um, taken care of. And uh, you know, the other tragic and unfortunate uh, situation that just happened in our community was the murder of Deputy Clint, Clint Bruner. Um, and, and perhaps mental health intervention in that particular case might have prevented that horrible murder. Uh, and, and it, this is mental health, it's, it's a real thing. It's something that we need to address, and we're going to do what we can uh, to address that problem in our community. But thank you for what you do, thank you very much.
Thank you, just want to say that, thank you so much, I appreciate everybody, and Arti too, thank you for everything. And we did also, um, did a Fenton awareness, so we have community partners for that, so it was perfect, so, thank you.
No more speaker cards on this item?
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public comments, moving on to. Did that one, number eleven, city council announce, announcements and requests. So I would like to make an announcement that we have the domestic violence event with the Zonta Club, Zonta Club of Anel Valley. It's called a Walk a Mile in Hersheus. It will be held on October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, right across the street here in Ponse Mon Square, starting at eight AM and, and this is to support domestic violence and the prevention of domestic violence, so if you guys have the opportunity. Yeah, yeah, so yeah, October is uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so be aware, be, you know, know where your resources are, if you don't know and you need help, you know, reach out to someone, call us, we, we can always hook you up with some resources. Um, but this is a, a good event if you're able to make it at Ponse Mon Square at eight AM on the twenty eighth. So that's the only announcement I have, any other council people have announcements?
Only thing that comes to mind is Trunk or Treats coming up, I know that's a very popular event.
Yep.
Very well attended every year, don't miss it.
Yeah, that's a lot of fun for the kids.
Yeah, no, uh, second to that, there's a lot of uh, Halloween related uh, activities coming up between now and our next council meeting. So I just want to make sure that everybody has a safe experience. And also, uh, on our website, there's a nomination process for hometown hero. If you would like to honor anybody that has served in the United States military, we're accepting applications for only two more days, so please hurry up and get there. Um, we'll have a uh, committee of veteran organizations that select these recipients to be displayed on banners hung along Rancho Vista Boulevard. So this is a, a veteran community, we support our veterans, we love our veterans, we want to have a public display of that support. So if you know anybody that needs to be honored, uh, please get that in, two, two days to do it.
And, and I think it can be for any war from.
It, I think it's.
World War One Forward?
Anybody that has uh, had an honorable discharge.
Yeah, so, okay.
I don't have any announcements, but I do have two requests for uh, future agenda items. Is that? Yeah. So um, first, uh, in, in response to some of the conversation about the uh, Human Rights Committee at its most recent meeting, we did hear a report from UC Berkeley Professor, uh, Dr. O'Hara along with Bubu Salud regarding a study about the correlation, or as she noted, she called it the association uh, between establishments with alcohol sales, uh, licenses and crime. Uh, her study was specifically focused on the city of Palmdale, and I thought her fi- her findings were quite compelling, specifically with regard to those establishments near schools. Uh, I think the data is important for this council to hear, so I'd like to ask that our city manager schedule a date in the future for Dr. O'Hara and Bubu Salud to present their reports to this council, but also to simultaneously report back on potential recommendations on how to address these issues, specifically including a potential moratorium on the issuance of additional alcohol licenses near schools and other sensitive uses while we properly assess this issue. So that's one, and I, three, I typed this up because I, I'm just going to end up giving it to you, Norty, so that you can have it in writing. So that's one, um, and then the second is, is, is one that's, I know near, dear to everybody on this council's uh, heart. We've all voiced support for the uh, Sheriff's Department and concerns about the severe understaffing of our Palmdale Station and the reliance on the use of CARPing, the cadre of administrative resource personnel, which essentially shifts detectives and others around to fill shifts um, caused by chronic vacancies, leaving our deputies overworked, exhausted and spread way too thin. About a month or so ago, we received a report that indicated that there were forty-four vacancies at our Palmdale Station. And just a few days ago, at our N C T C, uh, North County Transportation Commission meeting, we heard that that number may have increased uh, to potentially up to fifty-five vacancies. This trajectory is simply not sustainable and not good for either our deputies or the safety of the people of Palmdale. The county has also, also authorized up to ten academies this year for new deputies, but the challenge has always been in recruiting those deputies to come here. So in light of all of these things, I'd like to ask our city manager to explore the idea of offering financial or other incentives to newly sworn deputies to come to the Palmdale Station. For instance, maybe a signing bonus for the next ten deputies to fill vacancies in our station. There may be other ways to incentivize coming to our station, but I'd like to ask that our city manager explore those opportunities and bring back to this council for consideration any viable options for incentives. We've got to fill these vacancies and there's got to be a way that the city can help. So, those are my two, I will submit these to you for.
If I might, you, you've got two very broad directions. Uh, talking to the city manager and staff, we need council consensus to trigger. Uh, apparently the, the presentations have been considered before and as well as what you've just indicated, it's all fine if you have a council majority, so if it's your pleasure as a body, um, fine.
The request for future agenda items has never required a majority vote.
Well.
It's just a request for the coun- city manager to come back, to, to consider it and come back with potential.
The first one was a request for a presentation and an involved process. You as an individual don't have that authority, the council as a body does, so if the council as a body wishes to proceed, they can, if as a body, they don't, they can't. Asking for reports and that i- is very clearly controlled under the, the municipal code as far as what the manager takes as direction, so I, I put it to you, if you don't like it, ignore me, fire me, I don't really care, but the right answer is this council as a majority needs to direct those two things to be done.
Right, so we've had this occur since we were sworn in, I, I know Councilmember Olson in the same fashion asked that the city manager report back on the creation of a criminal justice or some sort of commission. We didn't have a majority, we, it was a.
There's a big difference between a report and requesting presentations, making the staff set things into motion. That is an order.
Let, let me finish.
You, you've said it twice now, we understand.
City Attorney, I'm, I'm speaking.
You are.
Councilmember Olson requested the exploration of establishing an entire commission, that is a huge undertaking.
No, no, that is not, you don't know what you're saying.
Do not interrupt me, I'm speaking. He specifically requested the creation of a commission, that is a big deal. I specifically asked for a presentation to be scheduled. That requires no actual, you know, governance development.
Si- city attorney, would it be appropriate for the city manager to reach out to each in, uh, council member individually and poll and uh, and gauge our appetite for these items?
Is this a new, is this a new process, because we didn't do it for that, and we've never, uh, we, since my entire time here, we've never had to require a majority vote to ask for a, a future in an agenda item to come back, we've never had to do it.
Asking for information versus asking for a process or a, a setting up of a presentation, particularly one that the council has declined previously, is within the council's jurisdiction.
Who is declined, anything?
And again, choose not to do it, do as you will, but this is the proper way, and yes, sir.
Okay, so you, that would be procedure, uh, correct thing to do by procedure? Have the city manager reach out to each council member?
We've never done it.
Well, you should.
Well, we should have, but now we're do- we're implementing that and enforcing it on, on items that I'm requesting? I, I, I mean, the.
Again, it's up to the council, do as you wish, you don't like the answer, I'm sorry you don't like the answer. It's a matter of record that two requests have been made and uh, and the city manager will call us and, and, and poll to determine if those things come back or not. Um, I do agree that CARPing is an issue that we have addressed before, uh, the captain's here, they know our concerns. Uh, it's a significant problem because our deputies are overworked and uh, essentially, uh, in my opinion, I think it could be alleged that the uh, Los Angeles County Sheriff's, that the Los Angeles County Sheriff uh, is not keeping the contract of one of the most expensive contracts in the county of Los Angeles, I believe uh, either the first or the second most expensive. So it's an issue, city manager will reach out, uh, and so far as alcohol and licensed uh, establishments, this is something that keeps coming back and we've talked about that. There is no question that alcohol is an issue that directly affects mental health as well and um, the city manager will figure out if we're going to do this.
So for clarification, um, and, and because the city attorney made reference to, this information has already been presented, having already been presented to this council. First of all, it has never been presented during my tenure or Eric, uh, Councilmember Eric Olson's uh, tenure, but second, in the presentation at the Human Rights Committee, Dr. O'Hara from UC Berkeley indicated that she did subsequent research and evaluation on the data and has new information to present. I think it's important for the city council to hear that, not everybody was at the meeting and not everybody had the handouts. It would just be beneficial for our council to hear the doctor from Berkeley's findings specific to our city on the correlation between alcohol license permits and crime, it's a simple request.
So it's been heard, I don't think there's been any, any other requests, Mayor? May we move the agenda, please?
Mayor, may I uh, make a comment about?
Yes, you may.
Yes, I did ask for the exploration to form a c- committee. Yes, I did ask for the exploration to form a committee, a criminal justice committee. Just for the record, I didn't have any expectation that I unilaterally can form a committee. I asked for it to come back to council. I asked for a review of the contract so that we can see what the issue is with CARPing. I asked for that review to also include potential options going forward to address that issue. I also asked the city manager to explore incentives, whether it be signing bonuses. I think I specifically mentioned housing, help with housing, to get more deputies here. So I'm in agreeance with the mayor pro tem, that, you know, those things are definitely needed. I asked for them. I would like to see them come back to the entire council.
So some of those issues have already been addressed regarding the incentives for them to come here. You have to realize that these are not city employees. These are county employees. They are dictated what kind of incentives they can get from the sheriff himself. We don't have the authority to give gifts.
That's right.
It's a very complicated process when you have a contract city. So these have already been addressed in the past. They can certainly be looked at again now that there's a new sheriff in town and see if he wants to allow us to give specific incentives to Palmdale deputies. Moving on, we're gonna go ahead and go to item number 12, City Manager's Report.
Good evening, council. So fall has been a busy time in our community, and we've held some events these last few weeks. We had Kaleidoscope After Dark, which was a great turnout, wonderful event in our community. We had Kaleidoscope Art and Festival. We also had Family Movie Nights on October 13th with Hocus Pocus and the Mental Health Walk, which was also a great event. Upcoming events, we have another Family Movie Night on October 20th, and this one's Nightmare Before Christmas. This is at the Palmdale Amphitheater at 5:00 p.m. We have a Pumpkin Walk Neighborhood Event on Friday, October 20th, at Dominic Masari Park at 5:00 o'clock. We have a Breast Cancer Walk, Making Strides, the American Cancer Society, coming this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. We do have a city team, so if you'd like to join us. And also the entire community, this is such an important event to raise awareness and funds right for the research of breast cancer. And that'll be at Mary Kerr Park at 8:00 a.m. We have Saturday, October 21st, the Children's Bureau Family Resource Grand Center Grand Opening, happening at 10:00 a.m. over at 525 West Avenue P4. We have a ribbon-cutting, a Red Ribbon Week kickoff event here by the Fentanyl Campaign on Monday, the 23rd, at 5:00 o'clock here at Poncelon Square. We will be announcing the winners of our youth challenge, and I'm happy to report that we had numerous entries from our youth who participated. So coming out and see what they submitted in their entries and see who the winners were. We have the Palmdale Dream Village Grand Breaking Celebration on October 26th at 10:00 o'clock, and that is by Advancing Communities Together off of 9th Street East, 38626 9th Street East. We have the Walk in a Mile event here at Poncelon as well on the 28th. On the 28th, we also have at 10:00 a.m. our Halloween Bike Parade. That is an event where you can decorate your bikes and go on the parade in the theme of Halloween. We have, and that'll be at Samuel and Park. We have a plaque dedication ceremony that's being coordinated by the family of Jacob Taylor, and they will be dedicating the tree that is at Mary Kerr Park at 10:00 a.m. that morning. We have the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters Trunk or Treat and Car Show on October 29th at 10:00 a.m. here at Poncelon Square. And we also have some Business Watch virtual presentations. Those are very important for local businesses to participate. They are via Zoom, virtual. October 30th, November 1st, December 18th, and additional information can be obtained on our website. And then we have our Parks and Recreation Master Plan Survey Results will be presented on November 2nd. There's two sessions. Session one is at 12:00 noon, and session two is at 6:00 p.m. They're both virtual and in-person. Palmdale Playhouse for in-person, and that's all that we have to report.
Great, so I have a couple questions. Just a minute. Regarding the Children's Bureau on P4, I believe that's the old Mulligans, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all of you who were wondering what happened to Mulligans and what's going there now, this is your chance to go out and see what has replaced Mulligans. It's the Children's Bureau that offers many services to children in our community and to families. Second thing is, on the bike, Halloween Bike Parade, for the youth, must they wear helmets?
Yes, the flyer indicates.
So I just don't want people coming out there and being upset when they don't have their, yes, sir.
We have a liability form for them to sign, and no one can participate in the bike parade without a helmet.
Okay, so I just want people to be aware before they come to bring their helmets. And they can decorate their helmets too, so that might be part of the...
There's no mask and no decorations that will make it dangerous to ride your bike.
Okay, got it. All right, I think Andrea, you're cool.
Yes, thank you. Well, Ms. Lopez, first of all, thank you for stepping in tonight. And I believe Ms. Pettis is doing better and will join us again. And I was going to say that people often say, "There's nothing to do in Palmdale", and we have just had a whole list of things, and I was going to end up by saying, "Is that all you have?" But good work, city staff, for everything that's going on.
Yeah, and then the one thing that I want to do is, we're gonna adjourn twice tonight, because we want to be able to do an adjournment while we still have an audience. Andrea is gonna do an adjournment in honor of Kimball Goodman.
So thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of two individuals. First, I'd like to request that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Manhattan Beach Police Motorcycle Officer Chad Swanson. As a 13-year law enforcement veteran, Officer Swanson lived a life of service and is off time while enjoying the infamous Las Vegas Music Festival. When someone opened fire on the festival crowd, Swanson jumped into action, ran towards the gunfire, and provided first aid to victims. Two weeks ago, Officer Swanson was struck on his motorcycle while on his way to work. Swanson leaves behind his wife Haley. On behalf of the city of Palmdale, our condolences go out to the Swanson family, the Manhattan Beach community, and all those in law enforcement who continue to suffer losses amongst their ranks. Next, I'd like to request that we also adjourn in memory of Mr. Kimball DeLeon Goodman. Kimball was a UC master gardener who generously volunteered weekly at a low-income senior citizen facility where he taught people how to grow flowers, fruits, and vegetables. Earlier this year, during National Volunteer Month, Kimball was nominated and acknowledged by the statewide UC Master Gardener Program as a gardener with heart for the impact he's made teaching the community how to garden sustainably and for supporting efforts to bring fresh foods and nutritional education to low-income and minority communities. Kimball loved the city of Palmdale and was so proud to work as a community liaison in the office of our newly-elected Assembly Member Juan Carrillo. Kimball will forever be remembered for his numerous contributions to our entire Antelope Valley community. On behalf of the city of Palmdale, our condolences to the Goodman family and all of those who called Kimball a friend. You will be sorely missed.
Thank you for doing that, Andrea. And now, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the last council meeting, but did the council adjourn in the memory of Deputy Clint Bruner?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have to keep him in mind.
Absolutely, we do. Thank you. Thank you for remembering. Now we're gonna go into closed session, so those of you that want to wait until we come back, you're welcome to stay. Otherwise, thank you for coming. Our next meeting will be November 1st, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. right here at City Hall, and we will be coming back out after we do closed session. Thank you all for coming.
All right, welcome back, everybody. If we could go ahead and get an announcement by the city attorney or from the city manager? City manager? City manager?
City manager.
Okay.
City will make up something.
Okay, do it. Good evening, council. For item 13.1, City Council has directed City Manager to negotiate an agreement with Harper Burns, Bill Curley, to retain their services for permanent city attorney services.
Thank you very much.
And to report back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it, and hopefully you'll still like me in the future.
Okay, and now we're gonna actually do our second adjournment of the evening. I'm gonna let Mr. Olson adjourn also in the name of Kimball Goodman, since you are his friend and coworker and...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words about Kimball. I first met him three years ago as an activist. We became delegates together. Kimball was never afraid to roll up his sleeves and fight for what he believed in. He was passionate about sustainable gardening and education, and he was a master gardener. That was his biggest pride. He worked with me in the office of Assembly Member Juan Carrillo for the last 11 months, and he was a friend. And I'm gonna miss him, and I wanna give condolences to his fellow friends and family. He was a powerhouse in the community, and he will sorely be missed.
Thank you for that, Mr. Olson. All right, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for coming.